Sure thing. I'm going to share my screen, but I also gave you guys a hard copy because sometimes it's easy just to have a print version in front of you when we're talking about some of these things. It's like, okay, I'll clear my throat. Okay. So, um, so my item 3.1 is legislative item. Um, it is for the large CAFO regulation that we had talked about a couple of times in the last two months or so. Um, what we have before you is a draft version of an ordinance that matches the scenario that we discussed at our last work session to deal with any new, new large CAFOs. So during today's meeting, we'll go through that, make sure that matches what we discussed last time and also talk about some other considerations before you guys make a recommendation. Our timeline is tight, so we don't have another opportunity to meet on this topic before we have to send it to county commission. We have to have, if we are going to approve or pass an ordinance on large CAFOs, it does need to be through the county commission by no later than February 1st. So we have it scheduled where that can happen, but we will need a recommendation from you guys today. And it is noticed and agendaized as a public hearing. So we do need to open and close a public hearing on this topic.
Scott, do you mind explaining why it has to be approved at such strict?
In a timeframe, so the state, this past legislative session in 2021, so back in, uh, in the summer, they passed Senate bill, it's in your staff report, I appended it just in case we wanted to reference the state requirements of a Senate bill 130. And it basically outlines a timeline whereby county, if they want to adopt a large concentrated animal feeding operation regulation, they need to do so longer before February 1st of 2022. So that's why we have a little bit of limited time. That's why we, we need a recommendation during today's meeting.
So on that, if, if we didn't act, if I remember our, our previous conversations about this, if we don't act, it stays the way it is.
Yeah, our current language would govern going forward.
Okay, but essentially from what we spoke about in our last meeting with, given the options that we had and given the information back to you, and this is the new, this exhibit is part of that option that we chose, option three, if I remember right, and then.
Yep, scenario three. If you want to reference that scenario again, I, I pasted it into the body of the staff report, just to, I guess, bring it back to recollection. First page toward the bottom.
Okay, thank you. I thought I had read that earlier, but.
Yep. So through the work session with both planning commissions, we were thinking in this scenario three that we would allow any new or newly established large concentrated animal feeding operations to locate in the A3, M1, M2, and M3 zones as conditional uses. Any existing large concentrated, concentrated animal feeding operations that are not located in any of those zones may continue to operate as non-conforming uses. We had initially said that they would not be allowed to expand, but we decided to just strike that because we felt as if the market would self-regulate in that regard. Any animal feeding operations or what we currently call them as livestock feed, uh, feed yards can continue operating as conforming or non-conforming uses. Conforming uses may expand if they're located in a permitted zone. And if they're non-conforming, then we would say that they would be allowed to expand. And then existing farms, as we know them, can continue to be permitted uses in the ag zones and they're governed by the special provisions that are currently in place. So that's, that's scenario three that we talked about at our last meeting. What we've tried to do is take those bullet points and then inject it into the code. So exhibit B in your staff report is scenario three drafted to fit into the code. What we had to do is we had to create a couple of new definitions. So the state has a definition for an animal feeding operation, and then they also have a definition for a large concentrated animal feeding operation. And the only difference between the two is the quantities of animals in these types of operations. So a large concentrated operation is very specific of how many animals it can have. An animal feed operation is still a concentrated feeding operation is just smaller in scale. So we separated the use into three definitions. So we have animal grazing, animal feed operation and a large concentrated animal feed operations. We define them as such where the animal grazing is the least impactful. So that's, that's basically anybody who wants to graze animals and where the land can support the grazing of those animals and the land can rejuvenate itself to support them on a year-round basis. With exception to the winter months where they can then be brought in and, and supplementally fed. From there, after we go past the animal grazing operation, then we go into animal feeding operation. And that's basically concentrated feeding operation, just not at the size of a concentrated, a large concentrated feeding operation. One thing to bring to your guys' attention, the staff report mentions that exhibit B, the draft ordinance matches exactly scenario three that we had discussed. But we had a Freudian slip where when we were drafting this, if you look at the land use tables on page two for the ag zones, you'll see that the first three line items are those new defined uses. So animal grading, animal grazing, animal feeding operation and animal feeding operation, large concentrated. We had initially talked about allowing for any new large CAFOs to be allowed in the A3, M1, M2, and 3, right? So you'll see in the eighth or the A zone table, it's listed as a concentrated, or sorry, a conditional use in the three. If you flip two pages over, three pages over where we have the M table. No, actually, sorry, one more. It's on the second page of the M table. Third line down, so third, fourth, and fifth line down. We're still showing the large concentrated animal feed operation as conditionally allowed in the M3 when we had talked about it being in the M1 and M2 as well. What we were doing, Charlie and I were working through Zoom. I was homesick with COVID in bed and working through this language, trying to get it ready. And what we had discussed while we were going through this and actually taking the scenario and putting it into code form, we kind of started thinking about M1 and M2 really, and even A3, we really wanted in any of those three zones. Let's discuss that with the planning commission. And so the table is actually drafted per the alternative recommendation in the staff report. But the staff report indicates that it's currently drafted to be scenario three. So I'm sorry about that confusion. We'll talk about that a little bit more. Charlie also is, uh, he'll be down here in just a minute, but he's gonna, in the work session, talk about some of the West Weber land use map efforts that they've been working on through the general plan. And some of the things that we were thinking about in the last, you know, several weeks, we've had a lot of movement on the industrial zone and, you know, the, the mega site as it's been termed. We've had some discussion about what are the increased densities in the A1, in the E2 zones, the general plan amendment. And then also we've been talking about, um, yeah, the rezone application in the M2 zone. Well, it's in M3 now that are wanting to rezone M2. So that's that I use, we're talking about. And do we really want to have large CAFOs in, in the M1 and 2 zone? So in the staff report, you'll see there's an initial recommendation. That recommendation matches what we discussed in scenario three, last time we spoke. The alternative recommendation actually matches the draft, okay, where we take the large concentrated out of M1, M2, and A3. And we wanted to, that was never in A1, A2. Yep.
That goes along with the conversation that we had previously about changing the M1, M2 so that if there's certain manufacturing processes or businesses that process things where they want to be buffered.
Right.
That falls into that, yeah.
Yeah. So that's, that's kind of what you'll be looking at and making a recommendation on today as part of the, the public hearing. Do you guys have any questions about the documentation in front of you?
Okay.
We know, do we know that the terminology that we use in like skipping over to batch plants is 3,000 barrels? Is that correct terminology for that industry?
So.
Or any other industry that we?
That's a good question. Luckily, it's not related to this, this topic. It's in, it's in this document because it's part of the section that's being amended. So it's shown there as context. We're not touching that language, but we know that the batch plants and the quantities is a question we have. And we're, we still have that on our to-do list when we go back and adjust some of those use tables in the manufacturing zones, any ordinance.
Chairman, is that, um, do we have the terminology and verbiage correct for the agricultural through that you looked over?
I feel it's adequate, yes.
Yes, we tried our best to keep it consistent with the state definitions as well. So we're hoping that it jives well with what the state has done on their research.
So Scott was just bringing this up to date. Not up to date, but giving us a rundown on exhibit B that goes along with the staff report for our legislative item and FYI, uh, item number 2.1 has been scratched. They, they're, they're, they want some more time to get the information. Come back on. Did I get that correct?
Yeah, exactly. We talked to them about a few issues, um, dealing with, um, the open space requirements and the exact calculations and getting some more detail from proper irrigation. And they were, they requested to have it pulled so they could address a few more things. Cause you noticed in staff's recommendation, we recommended to deny your tablet because those things hadn't been addressed. And they just wanted to have things buttoned up a little bit better before they came to.
And I, and I want to appreciate that. I'd rather have more information than not enough. And so hopefully they'll come back with at least what we need, if not more. And, uh, let's see. So on that note, I guess, would we have to start? Would we have to wait until five o'clock to start or gentleman, I guess, I guess, uh, and the commission editors, if you want any more information or, oh, I'm sorry.
I was just going to say that the meeting was noticed for 4:30. So if you would like to go ahead. Get started 10 minutes early.
Unless there's more information that you want. Okay. Good, we're starting now. Okay. Well, then we'll go ahead and, uh, bring our meeting to order. We'll go ahead and have the pledge of allegiance, please. Okay, uh, we'll start with the minutes. Did anyone have any? Any clarifications or corrections that need to be made on the?
I did notice one. Yeah, one of the votes showed six to one, and I think it should just be six to zero.
It's on page three because they don't mention.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. Well, we only had six members at that meeting because we had one left, so.
Okay. Yeah, that's the same.
Everything else good?
All I noticed. All right. Thank you, June. I really appreciate how quick these come back. It's even in a meeting we had the other day, it was sure nice to pull back and look up some old minutes and know exactly how something went. So I really appreciate it.
That was very helpful. Okay, on that note, we need, we, I'm sorry, go ahead. Actually, you can just do a voice vote on that. It doesn't have to be anything formal. But I just wanted to let you guys know, if you want to pull up any of the minutes, you can just go on to the planning website now. And all the packets and the minutes, um, are on there, um, under each year. So we revised our planning page because we wanted to be, make sure that it's just transparent. You know, before it was hard to find it and now it's just bam, right there. So.
Yep, Wes.
And I know the audio is available as well as that.
Uh huh. So.
To have been the past.
Exactly. And part of state code allows us to use audio and written as part of the legal minutes. So it's, it's made it a lot easier. So, right?
Hey, so now I'm, I'm going to kind of throw this out. We can change the order of our, of our meeting if we want to. You know, the administrative item has been, has been taken off the agenda. Liam has got a commitment at six o'clock. He has to leave. So, um, if, if we want to go into the legislative item, we can. Or if, if, uh, we want to, you know, move things around a little bit, uh, it's, it's kind of up to us as to how we feel about that. If I have no real opinion on that. So if anybody feels like they want to change it, speak up.
I would recommend to keep it how it is. I was just trying to buy some time for Bryn and, um, our commissioners to get here.
Yeah, no, good. Thank you. Thank you. No problem. Yes, I apologize. I was coming back to that. Anybody, uh, all in favor of approval of the minutes?
Hi.
Opposed? Passes? And again, thank you for your good work on that. We really appreciate having those. That is a big deal. Okay. So again, item 2.1 has been taken off the agenda. So we'll move down to item three, petitions, applications, and public hearings. Item three is a legislative item, uh, 3.1 ZTA 2021-10, public hearing in action regarding the county-led text amendment to add a definition and regulatory language to the land use code regarding large concentrated animal feeding operations. And, uh, Mr. Perks?
Thank you, commissioners. So as mentioned, uh, this is a county-led text amendment, um, that was spurred on by the state legislature, giving us a timeline, uh, within which we would need to adopt a a regulation, a land use regulation for large concentrated animal feed operations, or as we call them, LCAFOs. Um, that deadline is, is February 1st, 2022. So we have had a couple of work sessions up to this point. We drafted some language that matches a scenario that we've discussed in the past. And, uh, we are now here for a public hearing on the item and a formal recommendation from the planning commission to the county commission. What we have before you in, in the staff report is a draft of that regulation, um, that matches a scenario that we discussed in the past. But it does make a couple of changes to the use table. Use tables are shown on page two. And six of the draft exhibit, the one change that differs from the scenario that we discussed in work session in the past is any new large CAFOs would be conditionally permitted in the M3 and A3 zone. That's what is drafted now. We'd like to have a little bit of discussion on whether or not it makes sense to have them conditionally permitted in those two zones, or maybe even just in the M3 zone. The scenario we discussed in the past was more specific in allowing new large CAFOs in the A3, M1, M2, and then three zones. Um, and with a little bit more, uh, thought through the drafting process of this scenario, we wanted to have the discussion. Do, do we want to have large CAFOs in those zones? Or do we want to limit it then further to the A3, M3, or just the M3 zones? So that's a, a topic of discussion that we want to have before we make a recommendation on what's before you. You guys have any questions on the draft as it sits? So in the staff report, there's two, there's two recommendations. There's an initial recommendation, which would, if, if made by the planning commission, would match the scenario that we discussed, um, in past work session and would match the exhibit B with exception to the use tables. If, if this initial recommendation, as it's drafted in the staff report is adopted, it would allow large CAFOs to occur in the A3, M1, M2, and then three zones. The alternative recommendation would further restrict new large CAFOs to only the E3, M3 zone. Uh, but we do think maybe we also want to have that discussion if it should just be in M3. So if you want to make a recommendation, uh, that is just the M3, you would need to make that recommendation. That would differ from what's in the staff report, but the findings would still match what's in the staff report.
You're saying pull it out of A3 and just leave it in M3?
Just leave it in M3. The, the reason why we want to have that discussion is there's been a lot of discussion with, with the general plan update, a lot of discussion on the manufacturing zones and, and development in those manufacturing zones. And where some of this housing density is going to be located, and it is awfully close to some of those M1 and 2 zones. Does anyone have any, any initial thoughts on, on going with just M3?
I would support just M3 personally. I, it's not going to affect any of the existing operations, which I think is important. And I think it protects the, the future land use that Weber County has in mind for that area while still allowing um, a, a particular area that does, um, allow for concentrated and will be lots, but I, I am really nervous about putting them too close. I think A3 is still part of the buffer zone and we're trying to attract M1, M2 companies. So as long as we're not affecting existing um, large animal feed operations, I would restrict the future ones, or at least find a specific area that's not going to impact what we're trying.
Just a question on that, Commissioner. How does the, how does it differ when you go to the A3? Cause a lot of that A3 zone buffer does the same area, you know, as the M3, all that area is pretty well the same, the way you look at the maps out there now. So why come A3? Why would you limit the A3?
Well, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think that the planning commissioners or the planner, city, county planners looked at that. And that's why, um, it looked, the A3 is actually close to the, closer to the M1 and M2 than the M3. The M3 is more of a buffered zone than some of those A3s. And I don't know specific, but that's what it sounds like.
Yeah, let me just pull up the zoning, uh, maps just so everybody can kind of take a look at where our zones are and how they all coordinate. So looking at west, we've got obviously the A1 and A2 further east, and that's all slated for slightly higher density, or we anticipate last, that has slightly higher density in this upcoming general plan. What we discussed, um, in the past is this corner right here being rezoned from M3 down to M2 or M1. And then we've got the A3 here, which is, um, kind of in between the N3 and the A2. So if we were to allow large CAFOs in the A3, M3, they would be, um, side by side. But what we anticipate is a lot of this M3, um, especially on this, this easternmost portion of the M3 zone to be zoned either M1 or M2, which would make large CAFOs if adopted in the A3 and M3 zone, it would be separated by, um, a buffer that wouldn't be working as well. If we have large CAFOs allowed in A3 and then M3, and then have this M1 and 2 where they would not be allowed. So it's, it's a little bit strange allowing them in the A3 zone.
About how far west is this? We're on the M3, A3 zone. About how far west is that?
This is 8,300 west.
83?
I have a question. In, in, uh, a new, i- if this is, uh, adopted, a new, uh, concentrated animal farming operation, feeding operation, but they need to go locate in what is zone M3 then?
If we were to adopt it as.
And would the land need to be zoned M3?
It would.
So it would not be an agricultural. So you would be doing this work on M3, which is taxed totally different than A. Completely different. And a new operation will be potentially disadvantaged tax-wise off of the land that they're using.
Let, let me ask this, on the, on the tax, uh, on the tax question. And are those M3 zones? Just because they're zoned that way, they're still, they're still eligible for green belt, correct?
Yeah, I don't know definitively, but I assume so. That we think they would still be.
Well, and that's based on our conversation that we had when we spoke about the M1 zone change over here on the south side with Commissioner Jenkins and Commissioner Harvey mentioning that the amount of tax that was brought in off of that. And, and what they mentioned, and I don't remember the exact number, but it had to be green belt figures because it was very, very, very minimal. So I just wanted to make sure that I understand that right, because I think that's a good point. So.
Also too, I just want you to view, um, I had a conversation with one of the county commissioners today on CAFOs. We were just showing them the, the concept plan that we have for the general plan that you'll be discussing in the work session. And they were very concerned about, or that individual was very concerned about CAFOs being allowed anywhere in the county because of the impact that it could have on the mega site that they're working on in the manufacturing area and attracting potential, um, clients to that area. And as they see the plan, they're seeing it growing into something different, unfortunately, than agriculture out in that area, which unfortunately happens. I mean, it's right now, um, agriculture, agriculture operations are finding it difficult, um, to just maneuver around the roads out there, uh, because of the traffic. So that's just something I just want you to be aware of, uh, one of the county commissioners is that.
I just don't see the reason to pull it out of A3. I mean, I, I'm following here and I'm looking at your buffer zones. So you got farming operations and, and you're worried about the buffer between, between an M1 or 2. Well, all of that A3, I mean, you could have cattle, you can have farming, you have all that same stuff going on. They won't be concentrated, you know, a thousand head on, you know, 100 acres, but it's still going to be right next to it. So I don't understand the, the reasoning of pulling it out of A3. I, I get the, you know, leaving it in M3 and A3, but I don't see why pulling it out of A3 would benefit anywhere. At, at most parts, it could push it potentially further away from any of that site. I mean, if, if I was running a, a large feeding operation, I dang sure wouldn't want them sitting next to a manufacturing plant. I'd rather it be, you know, somewhere where you can get the feed to it a lot easier. You, like Director Groves, you don't have the traffic, you don't have all that. If we're going to restrict it from A3, then that totally just pushes them into the middle of all that higher traffic and.
Into the M zone or?
Yeah, that's what I meant. Sorry, did I say something else? Into the M3.
No, 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 you're okay. Yeah, I think I understand what you're coming from.
Well, uh, I think that the chances are pretty minimal of a large scale operation starting up from scratch.
And that's right. This is new, newly established. And that's right. This is new, newly established large CAFOs. So if it were your existing large CAFOs, they would be allowed to continue to operate in perpetuity as. As non-conforming uses.
Right.
This is if anybody knew is coming out. What we're concerned about under the new general plan thinking is, you know, we have a lot of housing that needs to come in. You know, we have a lot of demand for some of this larger manufacturing use. Our, our concern is if anybody new were to want to, you know, start up, then they would quickly be, you know, surrounded by non-compatible uses and. We'd be doing them a disservice by saying it's, it's an allowed use in this particular zone, and we know what's coming.
But isn't it going in as a conditional use in those zones? So we would still have to review and give them conditional use permit before it went forward.
True. They would have to mitigate their anticipated impacts.
So I, for me, I see a CAFO differently than an agricultural use, because to me, it's kind of a mixture between manufacturing and agriculture. It's not a natural agricultural process. It's, and that's why it is much more disruptive than just a typical A three zoning. So having a housing development, so we look here, that A three goes very, it's right by the A two and in, in the new land use, those are going to be homes. And to have animal manufacturing is the way I would. Describe CAFOs right next to housing. I think it would. I think it would be detrimental to the, the county and, and I tend to agree with the commissioners. I wonder if there's a need for. If this is a place for them at all in Weber County. Not saying the existing, but for future, I don't know that we want to.
I've got a comment here. The, the state. Forward this, this because someone at the state had decided rightly so that. Ag operations, large ones and residential don't, don't work together. And so I think that. From my standpoint is, is like, when, when you get up to amount of cattle, you know, I, I look at this. Much like the commissioner here on my right, it, it's industrial farming is what it is. If we had an A three out there, now I'm looking at our map here and it's clear over there. And right now today, it isn't going to matter what's there because the traffic's bad wherever it go. There's just no way around the traffic in western Weber County. And so I'm thinking that. As much as I hate to say it, I. Part of me thinks that it could be a condition of co-use in an A three. But the other part of me is thinking that maybe it isn't. A, a use that we want out there. Now that's not saying that somebody can't have a much smaller feedlot. Right? And so. And with that, the A three works in my mind. I guess this is where I'm going with this. So if somebody come in and said, you know, I'm, I want to have. Feed out a thousand head every cycle. I don't think it'd work, but if somebody's out there with a couple of hundred, it may work because the footprint of the operation is much smaller. So. I, I'm thinking then in my mind that. If right, right now where I'm at, if somebody come in and said, I'm going to do a big one, I, I would say, no, I don't think it's going to work. But a smaller one, I think it would work. And that could be the same for. A- any industrial type agriculture that deals with animals. Goats or whatever sheep. So I. I, I think for the smaller ones, the, the, we, we should have an A three area out there. I guess that's where I'm at. But not any large animal feeding, because thi- this mega area out there was set up. Aside long ago for exactly where we're going today with this. I mean, it was blocked out, set there, shouldn't be any problem trying to make it a, a one instead of a three or a two instead of a three. Because that's the area where it's going to be. And that's the, and it is rightly so that that is where that is. And that's where this large manufacturing and things that's going to add good jobs. And taxes into the coffers of our county here. That's where it's going to be in western Weber County. In fact, for all of Weber County, that's where it's going to be. So having said all this, I want to protect the, the manufacturing area. But I'm, I'm not, I guess where I'm at is maybe A three up there in the. Farther northern corner might work in my mind. I don't know. But I just think we need to keep the manufacturing as our jewel for the future, because that's where it's going to be. So I can live with an A three with a smaller operation, but no, no large ones.
Let me, let me ask a question. Had, had we ever had anything in the code for large operations like we're discussing today? It seems like we, we maybe did, or, but, but I'm, I'm struggling with that.
Yeah, we did. So we, we didn't call them the same thing. We used to call them, or I guess the current code calls them livestock feeder sales yard. That, that is particularly listed as conditional in the A three zone. The current definition of an animal feed yard, right? Livestock feed or sales yard. Yes. Commercial operation on a parcel of land where livestock are kept in crowds, where yards for extended periods of time at a density which permits little movement and where all feed is provided for the purposes. Of fattening or maintaining the condition of livestock prior to their shipment to a stockyard for sale, et cetera. So that, our definition of a livestock feed yard is, is a concentrated animal feed operation. It doesn't say large, because large is defined under state code at certain quantities. So the current use as a concentrated animal feed operation is conditionally allowed in the A three. It's not allowed in the, the A one or A two.
And we don't have it defined as a certain amount of. This animal or that.
It just indicates that, that if the ground isn't able to sustain, if you're supplementally feeding them for, you know, more than just the winter months, then that would be considered a concentrated animal feed operation. One thing, I guess to, to clarify, so Commissioner Adriati, you had mentioned, you know, maybe some smaller animal feed lots in the A three zone. And if you guys take a look at the use table on page two. So we have, we have three uses. We've got animal grazing, animal feed operation and animal feed operation, large concentrated. So animal grazing is just grazing animals on land that is able to sustain the grazing of those animals. Where it's able to regenerate itself and provide for the number of animals that is, is on it. An animal feeding operation, as we're defining it, is a concentrated animal feed operation, but it doesn't meet the same threshold as a large concentrated animal feed operation. So we're in the current use tables, we're saying that is only conditionally permitted in the A three. So that is up to, but not to exceed the large concentrated quantities. And under state code, a large concentrated feed operation is seven hundred mature dairy cows. Thousand veal cows, twenty five hundred swine weighing fifty five pounds or more, a thousand swine weighing less than fifty five pounds.
So you're saying it's a condition.
It'd be conditional in the, well, in the current draft. Up to, but not to exceed that amount would be.
Come get, they need to come get permission.
Is a conditional use permit. So it's not, it's not allowed by right. What we're thinking is the, the current land use tables as shown before you, that's where we're having this discussion. Do we want to have large concentrated animal feed operations in the A three? Or do we want to just leave it in the M three? We even want to have a constant, or just an animal feed operation where it's concentrated, but it's not to those thresholds of a large concentrated in the A three, or do you want to limit those as well?
In my eyes, the A three, if it's somebody that's already there, they're already covered. And. A, a, a current operation or even begin an operation because of the fact that they're there, they can, they can do that. They're, they're so to speak grandfathered in, is that correct?
Well, they, they can continue their operations under their current size and quantities, but if they wanted to expand their operations, if they were non-conforming, we would have to say no.
So what, what is the threshold for needing to? Have a, get a conditional use on this A three land, or is the threshold number wise there?
So the number, so if you have, let's say you have a hundred acres in the A three zone, but you only have maybe. It's hard to tell fifty cows, can fifty cows operate on a hundred acres and can, can it sustain itself? So we would say, okay, that's a grazing operation, because you have enough acreage to feed those animals in the, in the growing season without it. Without the land becoming.
The problem that you run into with that Scott, is it everywhere out in these areas, it all depends on land, it depends on water, it depends on what type of pastures, everything else. When you just go in and look at it from that perspective, it's gonna, there's going to be some areas out here. I mean, John used to run cows on them out there that, you know, probably a hundred acres wouldn't sustain fifty cows, just the type of ground that has, but then there's other areas that's out there that. You know, you probably could do it because of the type of ground it is. So that, that analogy is hard for me to.
There's, there's a lot of variables. And so that's why we're saying, if the land that you have set aside for the feeding or grazing of these animals, if it can't keep up with the number of animals that you have. Then you've tipped over from an animal grazing operation to an animal feeding operation, because you're then going to have to come and supplement.
But you also have to have them there consecutively, right? If they leave for part of the time and come back, then that changes it, right?
So if the land can keep up with it, that's great. If you have alternative pastures elsewhere to send them to, then that's fine as well. If they're staying there and the land can't sustain them, then we're saying, okay, it's no longer a grazing operation, it's animal feeding operation.
Go, go back to the, to what you read in, in what we currently have. Did, I, I want to. In the first few lines, there was something that, that I may have heard incorrectly. Read, read the first few lines of what's in place currently.
So our current definition of a livestock feed yard. Means a commercial operation.
Stop. That's as far as you need to go. Commercial operation. Commercial operation. Now that means something to me.
Sure.
That takes it from agricultural. Even though it's ag, but it, it elevates it to a different level. Now. I, that's, I thought that I had heard that. I wanted to make sure. So that, that answers my question. That, that, that helps me.
Can I ask you a question on that though?
Yes.
So every farm out there is going to be a commercial operation. If you take your produce and you take it into associated and sell it, then you become not a farmer, you become a commercial operation.
I, the, the only reason I asked the question is for clarity. I'm not trying to make a judgment based on commercial and non-commercial. I'm just saying that, that in the previous language meant something. And that's why it means something to me. It, it's kind of an elevation. Granted, I, I hear what you're saying. And, and I'm not disagreeing with that, but it definitely changes. It changes, well, it not only just changes it on paper, but it, it sort of changes it to a little bit different. Like I said. It changes it to a little bit different definition for me. So in, and in that, it kind of defines. How many animals? Where that threshold is on the amount of animals, I guess, is, is kind of where I'm, I'm going with that. Not saying that, that I've made a judgment, but it definitely puts. It puts a different, a little bit of a different definition to it. The way it is currently. That's not to say that what we're doing here going to the future is, is going to, you know, sway me one way or the other. I just wanted to understand what it is currently. So.
Well, I just, I mean, a commercial operation, if, if you raise three beef cows in your backyard and finish them out, and then you go and sell them. For a profit, you now become a commercial operation. Every bit of it's a commercial operation. Even though it's just a backyard farm, it's still, you're selling it. Once you do it for a profit, which everybody does it that way, whether you're raising grain and. You take it to the mill and sell it at that time, or, or any part of you, your milk, and it goes in, it's, it's all a commercial act. It's a commercial agricultural operation basically, right? That's. But so. I'm going to back up again. From what you said before, so you're saying with the way this is wrote. That you, a, an existing farm out there is now going to be capped and cannot expand. From the way that if we implement this new code, the way it is.
Not necessarily. So if you have enough acreage, let's say that you're in the A two zone. Okay, and, and right now we're saying that a, a new large CAFO can't go in the A two zone. If you're wanting to expand into an L CAFO, we would say no. But if you have a current animal feeding operation where you have less than the state thresholds. And you're able to sustain those animals. So let's not even call it animal feeding operations, just call it animal grazing operations, because you have enough land to sustain them.
Let's go to a dairy. Let's call it a dairy. So you're going to say that we got to have to limit a dairy? That they can't grow any bigger because they now.
In, in our existing code, they would be considered a animal. A livestock feed yard. So that's where they are kept in corrals or pens for periods of time at a density which limits little movement, or they're just intended to be fattened up. So dairy, right? So right now we're saying that they would be livestock feed yard. In our current code, it's only conditionally allowed in the A three zone. So if they exist in the A two, they're already a non-conforming use and they can't expand under that definition. So we're not specifically stay saying in here, any existing can expand. What we're saying is the tables already say it's a condition permitted use only in A three. You have to be located in the A two, for example. You're already non-conforming and I can't expand.
But this is part of that last discussion we had in the work session. You're looking at the acreage it sits on, you know, when are we gonna? Are you, I guess that's where I'm getting hung up on. A lot of these places have hundreds and hundreds of acres that they own and run and farm, but those cows might only sit on a twenty acre parcel.
Yeah.
So where is that?
Changes. So you're not just having them out to pasture to graze indefinitely. They're, they're there, they're, they're being fed to be milked, to sell the product. In a concentrated area where they're not really allowed to move. So the use is different. I mean, if you have, if you're just grazing animals and then you bring them in, you know, for, you know. For slaughter, you, you transport them for slaughter, then they're just grazing where they are. That's a different use. And so there's a separation of, of intensity there.
In the work session, we also, I think there was, we, we made recommendations to, you know, bring in some partners and have some meetings with some people at the state and farm, do your own different stuff, day that take place.
It did, and we just sent it in a time. We had the, the holiday code that came up. I was homesick of color. It just, it just didn't happen. If there's anything that you know for sure, that they would be able to provide us in the next couple of weeks, any contact information, you can still. Ask them for additional information. We just have to have this in front of the county commission by the first of February for their potential and activity.
I think there's a, there's a lot of information that's, you know, that can come from the state that, you know, writes these plans and these CAFO plans. And because there's a lot of stuff that goes into these type of operations. That I think that's why, you know, the recommendation was made. So.
Well. A, a, a thought on this. And it's just a thought. It's not a, it's not a bias. It's just a thought. The operations, what they've become now. Are, are non-compliant. We've established that. Had someone. Someone or an entity been, been monitoring what was taking place with the growth of, with the growth of those operations, they would have either had to have been re-permitted. Or rezoned for, for their operations for what they are today. So. To me, if, if you're, if you're out of compliance, but, but you're going to be okay being out of compliance, we, we, we understand that, then, then that's one thing. But what we're talking about is something that's going to start. New. And, and so if this is a, a new start, then. For sure, it, it needs to be in compliance with something, whatever that something becomes, whether it's, whether it's what we've got in exhibit B. In, in one of the two recommendations that we have, or something different than that. But, but really what's, what's happened is just kind of, I'm going to say gone unchecked. Over the years. Probably twenty or twenty-five years ago, most everybody that was in the dairy business or in the cattle feeding business was within, was in compliance, would be my guess. I don't think that until you got over into Davis County, over to. Patterson's feed lot. Or maybe, maybe Ed and Jim Wayman, I don't know how many, you know, cattle for sure, but I don't think that they exceeded what they would probably have been zoned for at that time. And they are one of the larger, in the last twenty-five years, one of the larger ones left in the area. So. To me, you're saving people that live in the area, meaning that if they already have an existing operation, they can continue on. And if, if someone's going to start fresh in however we decide this is going to be. Then going forward, they need to comply. And I don't think that that's anything new, and I don't think that it's wrong. What's happened and with what we have now has just gone out of compliance for lack of there being. Any, well, any enforcement or even any check, checking. Any, well, any enforcement or even any check checking into it. And so. You know, and certainly in those circumstances, if we're, you know, I'm not interested in going to somebody and saying, hey, you know, you, you've got to pare down your. You know, your herds, uh, when, when they've got, you know, millions of dollars worth of assets there. Uh, in, in infrastructure. So no, that's, that's, that would not be fair and would not be palatable to me. But I think going forward. Because of the fact that there's history that, that zoning had to be. I'm gonna say met, whether it was or not. Um, I, I don't necessarily have heartburn in putting those, those things out there going forward again. Whatever they may be, whether it's in the recommendations we have today, or something before February first to give the permission.
Chair, would it be, I guess, I would like to see if anyone here is.
Well, yeah, I, we're, we're going to have to have a public, uh, public hearing because we, we've, uh, we've noticed it as such. So. I think that at this point, unless we have any more uh, comments for staff, we'll go ahead and, and open it up for uh, the public hearing.
I have a question. So did any of the property owners in A three pick to be in A three?
Not necessarily.
Okay.
Did any of the property owners in A two pick to be in A two?
Some may have, but maybe we'd have to look back on the rezoning applications in the past.
And the point is, we. We being somebody assigned. Uh, a label to the land. Now that we've assigned a label to the land, now we're gonna make them live within these rules. And I don't see why we keep creating more and more rules when we don't know what the future holds. We don't know that we're not gonna go into a Great Depression and blah, 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 and we just shot ourselves in the foot. We can't grow our own meat in this area. We can graze them. We haven't defined what a small operation is unless they're already there. My kids at one point didn't want to do anything with farming. Now they do. They don't have the money yet to go buy property and be able to have cows on a piece of ground in A three right now. But they might in ten years, but we're restricting them today.
Let me speak to that. So this kind of comes all the way back to Euclidean zoning. We have a long history in our country of. How and why zoning has become what it has become. You know, through a lot of landy's decisions and some pre Supreme Court decisions and we've come to. You know, planning is looking at the future. We, we do master plans with twenty year horizons where we look at growth rates and we project out into the future. So we can reasonably anticipate what may happen. We don't know for sure. To your point, we don't know for sure. We, we plan ahead and if things change, we can change too. Let's say that there's this horrific event and we need to dramatically increase our food production. We can rezone and we can, we can change loud uses at that time. But we can foresee is what we're planning for. And that's why zoning is there. It's a separation of uses. It's to protect. You know, the existing citizens and to also help people understand what can be anticipated in the future. So it's, it's not us arbitrarily saying you're A three, you're M three. It's us looking at a master planning, you know, there's a, a general plan process going on right now. But we're looking at what does the future look like? What uses do we need to accommodate for? What growth patterns are we seeing? Where are those projections going in the future? And so it's, it's not just us saying you're in A two, you're in A three, we're restricting your use. It's, it's a lot more broad than that.
I, I agree. I, I also would like to point out that, that I get the same arguments in dealing with the building officials in general, right? All of the wonders of the world were built long before. There was any sort of building ordinances. You could not build those wonders of the world today. It's the same thing here. There, there's not a reason to restrict. So if there is, we should hear a reason that we should restrict and change and restrict people. Restrict them on what they can do with their land that they pay for. And if there is not, we should not.
And to that point. When we do not restrict, we, we do not set any sort of expectation for property owners. So. What allows one property owner to fulfill their dream, to destroy the dream of their next door neighbor. And that's why we have zoning. Sorry, that's my voice. That's why we have zoning. That's why we have planning is that we cannot. Grant everyone's wishes simultaneously. It is, it is just not possible. And first come, first served doesn't really work either. But what does work is setting up expectations. And that is what I feel our role is. Um, in the community is to make sure that we be as fair and as we can to the current landowners. But we'll make sure we set up expectations so that everyone is following the same guidelines. And I think it's hard. You're right. There's going to be some people that win more, lose more. But if we just throw out all the rules. We really only end up with.
I think we just need to be careful that it's not the land of the free. You just have to pay the fee. You just have to ask permission. Right? As soon as it's a conditional use, you're asking permission.
And if you don't ask for permission, you may severely damage the rights. And so right now I think we need to hand back. Um, let's look at the big picture of what we're, we're deciding, cause it'd be nice to solve all the problems. But I think here we, we've got one. One issue we need to get a decision on. And I'd like to hear if anyone here. Faults to.
Doesn't have to be today. I mean, we still have more meetings this month. I disagree with that. We can, there's still more work to be done. February first is still a month away.
I've got a comment. Uh, you know, uh, part of the planning process is, is. What, what is the future gonna behold? And if we were set right where we are today, nineteen fifty, we'd have never believed what we've seen here today. There's no reason to believe that development's gonna slow down or stop. It's not gonna happen. We've got a manufacturing area. We've seen a tremendous increase of businesses in that Davis County on Hill Air Force Base. We've seen to some this, uh, extent, uh, what's happened over BDO, it's continuing to grow. Well, when these buildings go up, there's people. And people have to have a place to live. And that place to live, unfortunately, or fortunately, is moving west. So these are the kind of. Conversations we have to have. When. We still have a, I'll call it a viable ag operation today. In my day, when I grew up, almost every guy in Warren had a dairy. Today, there's two dairies. Things change. But the thing that's not gonna change is, is development. People are gonna come here as long as businesses. Locate here and all indications are that's gonna happen. We see the wave coming from. Started Utah County. It's been coming north. It's in Davis County. It's here now. And we're not prepared. Where, where's the roads? Where's the infrastructure? We don't have that. So we're behind the power curve, but that's not gonna mean that we can just not consider what's about to happen here in the next five years. So I, for making some kind of a decision, because the last thing we want is the state of Utah. Even though they say, and just go like it is. If we make the decision, we make it locally. If we don't make it, then maybe somebody's gonna come and tell us how to do it. And that's the last thing we want. So I think that through this process, we can come to some kind of agreement on what needs to happen. Maybe one of them is, is let's just discuss what a big CAFO is and does it fit in any of these zones? Yes or no? Maybe no. Not gonna happen, man. That doesn't rule somebody to have sixty head on their place or twenty or three. Because that will still continue on. So I'm, I'm not for tabling this or slowing it down. I think we can hammer something out here to where it's gonna be workable. And nobody's gonna get what they want in this. Nobody ever does. So I think we need to continue on. We've got people here, be interesting and interested on what they're gonna say. And uh, our job is to keep the eye on the future, not the past. And that's what we're on the planning board for. In the middle of the general plan right now. A lot of these areas, the A ones and twos is gonna, they're not gonna be there. Because there's gonna be issues that cause these things to be moved towards residential. And with all the pressure going west, I used to think I'd never see a sewer. Now I'm seventy-seven and I'm thinking I'm gonna see a sewer out west all of a sudden now. So uh, I hope I live that long. But anyway, I, I just think that, that we can hammer this out. Cause things are gonna change and things stay the same for a little while. So let's continue on and see what we can come up with.
Some of the problems that I see here is just like. The small operation to them smaller. So right here in animal feeding operation on line four. Animals that have or will be stabled or confined and fed or maintained for a total of forty-five days or more within a twelve month period. So every cow calf guy out here that owns cows. We live in Utah, we get snow. There's about six months a year that you're gonna have to supplementally feed them somewhere. Every guy that has seven, eight, maybe ten roping stairs in his backyard to rope. Through the summer. Now he's not in compliance because it's over that forty-five day threshold.
Well, I think we need to clarify. So this is just the definition. Okay. When you look at the use table and then in the, uh, the specific requirements.
Permitted in all those zones. So these people couldn't even have it.
That's right. And it's conditionally permitted in the A three, in the table now. The question is, do we even want that? But uh, if, for example, you have an animal feeding, or if you have an animal grazing operation, you do have allowances in the code to allow you to bring them in during winter months and supplementally feed them.
Where I've, that's why I just went through to see if I could find that so that I knew.
So animal grazing.
Yeah.
So that's the third definition down. Animal grazing is allowed in any of the ag zones. So you can graze animals as long as they don't overwhelm the, the land that they're, uh. That they're dedicated to be on. And you can still bring them in during the winter months and supplementally feed them. So that, that allowance is, that's not going away.
So, but. That's A one on, yeah, it's line one. I'm on line sixty-eight. That says the same thing on that. But I just hate when we put these numbers on them. On these other ones, because then it's, I think it contradicts it, cause you can read it on line sixty-eight, which is basically the same thing as it says on line one thirty-two. Then when you go down to. Animal, even animal grazing has an issue, I, I feel, because when you go into number four on animal grazing, it should not come, not include any erection of any permanent fences. How do you keep them in? How do you rotationally graze them? Correls, how do you catch them to try and move them? Shoots, how do you load them? Or structures.
So if you read, if you read four all the way through, it indicates that, yeah, we don't want to have any of these permanent facilities. That are normally associated with an animal feeding operation. And if you look at the definition of animal feeding operation, that is where they are concentrated year round.
I, I understand that, but you gotta have a corral to catch them. Then you gotta have corrals to have them on a animal feeding operation. You gotta have shoots to load them when you move them from a pasture there.
We can soften that if you're worried about.
I think four needs to go away completely. I think, I mean, the, the big thing that NRCS and that's gonna push is rotational grazing. That's gonna split your pastures up. You run them for seven days, you move them to the next, you move them to the next. This says I can't go put a permanent fence through the middle of it, the. Rotationally grazied animals to make the pasture grow better.
I don't think we'd have any heartburn with striking number four. I think the intention on number four was just to say, okay, we don't want these things creeping into, starting to look like a concentrated feeding operation. Because you have so many of these facilities, um, that make it then start to look like you've crossed that threshold. So I think we're okay to strike that. We just, we're wanting.
Isn't it up to a thousand head?
This would be under.
No.
So what's that number though? I still haven't heard that.
That's the large concentrated animal.
So an A three can have how many per acre? What's the number?
Forty. Isn't it forty? Up to, on one acre, forty head, as long as they can sustain themselves. In an A one, it's twenty-five.
Uh, that's impossible.
Oh, no, you couldn't.
It's about fifteen minutes.
Yeah, it wouldn't work. I mean.
So immediately, what's the real number? Cause the real number is what?
It's just, I, it depends on.
Three, two. And so.
Yeah.
We have, we have a definition that doesn't really work. It's, it's, it, anybody gets to decide if you can keep that many animals on that.
I think we're, I think we're not reading everything in its full context. So if you look on line one thirty. Okay, these are the special regulations for an animal grazing operation. So if you have an animal grazing operation, these are the special regulations that you would need to follow. Okay, so let's read line one thirty. Animal grazing, this you shall not include the supplementary or full feeding of the animals except. When in compliance with the following. So we're saying you can graze your animals during the summer as long as they don't overwhelm the pastures that you have set aside for them to graze in. Except when you need winter, uh, stabling and supplemental feeding, we'll say, okay, you can do that. But it needs to be carried on, um, based on one, two, three and four. That's what we're saying. We don't want to have it be. To where you're, you're taking all of these, these animals and you need to do it. Um, within the context of one, two, three and four. So we, we can read those through. Just we're not getting, you know, ahead of ourselves. So one, it may be carried out on during times that are reasonable and necessary due to lack of natural growing feed. As a result of seasonal changes or extreme and temporary meteorological events. We wrote that to allow for winters, floods, you know, any sort of meteorological event that may happen where you need to bring them into a concentrate.
Drought like right now.
Right. And so we'll say, okay, there's an event, bring them in, supplementally feed them. Okay. Number two, it shall not exceed a density of twenty-five head per acre of used land in the eighty-three and A one zones. And forty head per acre of used land in A two and A three. So we're saying we don't want them to get too concentrated. You can concentrate them for that time period, but not beyond those, those limits. Number three, it shall not be closer than three hundred feet to any dwelling, public or semi-public building. On an adjoining personal land. That was an existing piece of language and we haven't touched. The number four, uh, we've kind of talked about this already, but it shall not include the erection of any permanent fences, crowd shoot structures, rather than buildings normally. Normally associated with an animal feeding operation. So we just don't want it to get to where you have so many of these facilities to where it looks and starts to feel like. A year round concentrated feeding operation. But if you're concerned with that, which I think you're right, you have to have some fences, some corrals, some facilities to bring them into winter. I think we can strike that, or we can change the language to get to that point. Um, we want one, two, three and four to be in place during those winter months or unique, maybe a lot of quotes. That help clarify.
That makes a lot better. Thanks for pointing, painting the better picture in my head.
You've got to read it top to bottom before the full context comes into view.
But four still needs to go away.
We can, we can have it go away or read.
How many, how many places do you take your cattle? I build a corral in the corner of every one of them so that you ain't gotta go and haul panels and set them up. And then if they push through the panel or they. Or they get pushed somewhere that has it.
I think it's a good comment. I think four can go away. We only had included it because we don't want it to become incremental.
I, I get where you're going with it, but the problem is that if you have ten cows, you're gonna have the same type of equipment that if you had a thousand, well. On a different scale, but you still gotta have the same type of.
Sure.
You know.
Yeah, I think it's becoming.
I feel better about it now.
Well, you're, you're permanent, probably what you're talking about too. It's permanent because it's in the ground.
Yeah.
But it's not concrete.
No.
You don't pour, you don't pour a floor there. You don't, it's all stuff that you can go back with a, with a loader and yank out of the ground in about, in about a half a day.
But when you, when I read fences, I mean, that's, that's how a fence is as well.
Wait, yeah, but I think the difference here is, is animal grazing permanent is, is somewhat different than permanent, like a feed yard.
Yeah.
Permanent. The infrastructure is different.
Go pour feed bunks and feed lines and all that stuff out there. No, you're not gonna have that. Semi-permanent corrals and shoots and.
Now, this language was just to help us get through the season.
No, and I, I appreciate. I have one more thing that might ease some, ease, at least it eased my mind a little bit better when I. I'm gonna find which line it was on again. They talked about. That none of these were allowed within a half a mile. Zone.
Zone boundary.
Line eighty-four. So when we go, I'm bouncing back to the large caves, large animal, concentrate animals, cause that's kind of, I guess, what we're discussing. But it said a large animal, large concentrated feeding operation should not be located within a half a mile of a. Zone boundary, unless it's shared with another. Boundary where it's allowed. So I guess that goes back. So even if you had one and you had the concern of the. boundary where it's allowed. So I guess that goes back. So even if you had one and you had the concern of the, you know, but being up close to a A two, you've still got a half a mile buffer before it can be.
Half a mile for these type of operations is I think it's not great enough for the impact. I don't think we would see the kind of language that's coming from the state and coming from the planners if there wasn't considerable concern about the impact these operations have. Not saying they shouldn't exist, but making, there are certain operations that need special consideration because of the impact to the environment around them.
So what I'd like to be able to do now, unless we have more discussion or questions for staff is I'd, I'd like to get to where we open up for public comment. So I'd like what the public has to say. So I'll ask them. But he got anything else for staff right now? Cause we can come back to staff after. We will. Uh, if we've satisfied pretty much everything we need to for the moment, I'd, I'd like to open up a public hearing.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. I have a motion.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
I, I.
Hi.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Okay, with that, I'm open public hearing. Yay, twenty twenty-one dash ten. That would like to speak on this, uh, public is very welcome. When you come up to the podium, please give your name and address. And give us three minutes worth of your, of your mind.
My name is John Price, um, six forty-six South seventy-nine hundred West, just out by and it's that purple. I was just gonna clarify a few things that you guys asked about. Uh, one thing I know is, um, the green belt. So all, I leased a lot of the, about a thousand acres inside that purple and it is all in green belt. To be in Greenbelt Weaver County, you need to have four continuous acres that's being used as agriculture. The zoning doesn't matter as much. I don't know about like maybe middle of Ogden. I don't know what they do there, but out here it, it is for continuous acres. So as a matter of manufacturing, so that would be qualified for um, green belt if it is an act, I can use four acres or more. Um, so I get this, the, um, kind of clarify what you asked. If anybody chooses, you know, what zone they're in, I think to an extent, I you guys will, some of you will remember that I did change the zoning on my ground. Because the master plan was written a long time ago. That's why we are updating it now and, and things have changed and, and, uh, why not? And so we talked about it and it made sense, uh, with you guys with, in the county commission to make those changes on that zone. So I think that's what this is for, right? That's why we have planning commission. That's why we have is we do use our heads and we can make changes when they do make sense and when they are necessary. And we have been able to do that in the past. Um, just another comment you made, uh, Mr. Call is your kids want to buy some A three ground out here and put some cows on. Um, twenty thousand dollars an acre, I'd recommend if they can afford A three ground to go buy a ranch somewhere. Uh, be a lot better off. This is not good ground. Um, I love the ground. I love the ag life. It's my, I do it in a heartbeat. It's my first choice. Um, it is tough. It's tough to do it out here. It's getting tougher. Uh, the, the price of ground makes it almost impossible. Um, you cannot, if I want to expand my farm, uh, twenty thousand dollars an acre, with the exception of growing something illegal. You know, that I, it's just not doable. You know, it's, uh, I would try anything in the world to make it work. And, uh, it's just, that's the reality of it is. And and so, uh, to, to say, oh, we're trying to protect the ag, you know, the ag life, I think we've, we've got about kind of passed. Um, I think we need to look forward to what is coming and plan for it, which is what you guys are doing now and appreciate, you know, the work you guys are putting into it, but um, you know, it's, uh, it's, it's not the, uh, it's not Weaver County twenty years ago. It's, it's changed and it's hard and Bren, Bren knows darn well, but yeah, you don't wanna know that, that ground will not support that many cows to begin with, you know, the most that ground out that we're talking about in this west Weaver County area. And years like this year, you know, we, we're in a dry, dry time. And, uh, that's a, that's a tough living out there. So just to kind of clarify some of those questions you guys had and and whatnot, that's all I was here for. And I'm here for more. Answer any questions you guys might have about some of the other things going on, so.
Thank you, Mr. Price. Appreciate it. Anyone else? So I'll take that as a no. So.
Make a motion.
Let's close the public hearing.
I'll second the motion.
Perfect. All in favor?
I.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you very much. Okay. Now we can discuss. Where do you want to go?
I, I, I mean, I, I really think it's ever seen one of these here. It's never gonna happen. Because it's not just the area to. See a large. My biggest concern is some of the operations that are out there, like we've talked in the other sessions. Dairy's not gonna expand. They would like to, but where they support, dump all their milk to limiting their expansion. But I don't want the county to be the, the regulation saying, no, you can't expand. I mean, maybe someday there might be a milk plant that's built up here and it might change, you know, that up. So that's my biggest concern. Between M three and A three with the buffers now. Build one in an M three. It kind of goes back to the discussion we have with smells and everything else. Same plant. Well. Three zone. Buffer of a M two. That's still gonna screw up the, the tomato plant or whatever that we've discussed last. Smell's still gonna be there, so. Free zone's got just as much problems as if it's in an A three by. You look at someone just in our area that still feeds this type of the number of cows, there's a reason why he has bought every bit of property in a couple mile radius around. He has a lake on one side and he owns everything for probably four miles around him in every other direction to secure what he has for two reasons. And you don't run into the neighbors complaining about the smell, but he also can grow and sustain the feed that it needs for that operation. That's right there on the north or the south side of the lake. See it up there.
Chair, if I, if I may comment real quick.
Yes.
So the, the current zoning is already limiting, um, where technically it's conditionally allowed in the A three, um, in the M three zone. So right now they're already not able to expand. Most of the, the ones that we know of are in the, in the two. Fortunately, they're already limited. Now nobody's knocking on their door saying how many cows do you have? And, you know, if they were to come to us with a, with a land use permit and say, we want to build a new, you know, milking barn, I think that's where we would say, look, it's already not a permitted use in this area. So, you know, I'm sorry, we're not gonna allow you to expand. Um, but just, just to clarify, we're not, we're not having any, um, sunset clause. We're not saying you have ten years before we're gonna kick you out of town. There's nothing like that. I mean, they can continue to operate as non-conforming uses indefinitely, as long as the market supports.
That's where my disagreement with the contention comes from. If we were starting something completely new here, it would be completely different for me. I would be looking at it in a whole different light, but we're not. We're carrying something that's already historically in there forward. And not only are we carrying that forward, but we, we're being, I'm gonna say pressured to do it because of SB one thirty. And that's fine. It's, it's part of, it's part of what we're doing here. It's part of planning. It's part of what the legislature has the latitude to do and, and to push it to, to the municipalities or, you know, incorporated areas. That's what we're here to do. So to me, given the fact that there's already historical value to this, it's a no-brainer. Um, we, we move forward because of that. And, and literally for, for me, that is why. Um, again, my, my thoughts would be completely different if we were, if we were legislating something new here, but we're not. That, folks, for what it's worth. Any other comments? This.
As of two years ago, uh, uh, farm to plate was a hobby. Now it's becoming, it's grabbing more and more of the market share. As far as, uh, giving someone what I like to call the golden ticket, which is you were here. You were born before me. You had abilities that I didn't have because I wasn't born during your era. Uh, that's the same thing as what, uh, they did with the halibut permits up in Alaska. Halibut permits were affordable up in Alaska until they handed them all out to who was there right then. Now halibut permits go for what? What does a halibut permit go for? They didn't have to turn them in. They were just allowed to have them and allowed to sell them and allowed to whatever. So they gave them a golden ticket. A halibut permit right now up in Alaska is worth two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for one permit. So when you give someone who was born before you just, uh, the ability to pass on what they have from generation to generation to generation and up and comers never have an opportunity unless they come ask permission, you create a slippery slope of this person has value it that you will never be able to obtain. And to, for any of us to think that we can predict the future, I don't think we can. And under what I've been reading, the farm that I hobby farm in Willard grazing Akashi and Wagyu, I would be non-conforming. If I started it the day after the commission here voted. If I wanted to set up that operation, the day after I'd be non-conforming, I'd have to ask permission. I'd have to, not for the large animal, for the smaller animal. Right? So I, I, again, restrict what we want. Everybody gets to vote. Everybody gets to make a suggestion to the commission, but there's no reason to make restrictions. Unless you need to make restrictions. Well, if it's the large animal, great. It's the, we're just gonna address the large and make a few changes to uh, hobby farm, what a hobby farm's able to do. Let's talk about that as well.
Any other comments?
Well, a hobby farm's not a capital. Least the way I look at it. Um, the, the only question I have, and, uh, I, I really appreciate your comment on that because um, we, we've got operations out there and, and who oversees them to make sure that they meet the EPA and everything? Does people go out and look really, or do they drive by and say? And I think that, uh, the operations that's going today uh, should be in compliant with what a new one would have to meet on the environment. Because I'm thinking that, you know, we've got, I'm not saying we have to move the dairy, but what I'm saying is, is I, I think that there's better places to have them, but we have them where we have them, but they need to be in my mind, as clean as they can be because, you know, they're, they're by rivers, they're by creeks, they're by train ditches. And, uh, so I, I guess just my thought is, and it's probably a conversation for another time, but you know, who, who actually looks? Because there's rules been made. I go in and read it, but I never hear anybody uh, happen to fix something. So anyway, uh, let's have that discussion another day. Because I think the health department needs to be involved in others. But anyway, that's just my thought.
I would just say, I, I think we do have to have permission. The conditional use is important because the impacts are unknown and different. We don't want a blanket statement, no everywhere. And the conditional use allows us to take them, you know, health department may be well, in some areas that it's not in others. Um, so my, my feeling is to accept the alternative recommendation, but I, I would like to strike be and only allow the M three zone, but, um, not affect the existing operations. That's, that's my inclination right now is a conditional use in the manufacturing zone. I would also entertain that we don't allow the large animal feeds in this small section of Utah. I, I do realize, I just don't think this is the place for them. I think we've heard enough comment that it's not the place for them. And it's not saying that they can't do it anywhere. It's just this particular region has a different use that is better suited.
I agree with most of it, except I think it should be more in A three than M three, because I think your bigger effects on your manufacturing would be in an M three than an A three zone. But I, that's why I feel let's let it go both ways. But the only thing I'd like to add is I would pull that item four off of the small grazing or the grazing item.
Keeping it only A three conditionally used. And I guess we could look at buffers in that area. If it's conditional use, then we would be able to look at the area and then strike four.
Yep.
I would be okay.
Chair, I'll make that a motion. Let's be done.
Well, I, I'm, I was gonna ask for it. I, I'll.
It's almost six o'clock. He's gotta go.
Just because, just because of that and, and, uh, and I think the discussion's pretty much been had. Um, I'll, I'll take that motion and ask for a sec. Okay, I'll motion in a second. Commissioner McCormick. No, wait a minute. Stop, stop, stop. Now let's, let's make sure. So which recommendation are we going with?
Alternative, alternative recommendation. But the, and keeping it conditionally, A three, M three zones. Where we get a review it, but the only other thing is going in and striking that, that four off the grazing.
Item number four on line one thirty-two.
Yeah, so it's, it's listed twice, uh, for the A zones and the M zones.
All right. So, all right, we clear on.
And, and my findings are the recommend, or as listed in the packet.
Perfect. Okay. All right. Note. Commissioner McCormick. Commissioner Andrea.
Hi.
Commissioner, uh, Wickern.
Hi.
Commissioner, uh, Call.
Uh, present.
No.
Okay, if you're in attendance, you have to vote aye or no. You can't abstain. Uh, Commissioner Edwards.
Aye.
Chair votes aye as well. Item is voted up five, one. Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner. There's a lot of, uh,
No, you're all right. I appreciate that. I appreciate the time and the, the consideration.
Okay. Back to the main agenda. Oh, man, my favorite item. Item number four on our agenda, uh, elections chair and vice chair for twenty twenty-two. So I will, uh, open that up either for a motion or for discussion.
Chair Faverro, you've done a great job over the past year. Um, we are able to serve two years as a, as a chair, from what I understand, from the rules of order. So I would, uh, make a nomination that we hold you in as the chair for another year.
I would second that.
She thinks. It was only my favorite for one reason. All right. So do we need to do a roll call on this one or just, uh, straight up? You do need to make a roll call. Call. Commissioner Call.
Aye.
Commissioner Edwards.
Aye.
Commissioner Wickern.
Aye.
Commissioner, uh, Andrea.
Aye.
Commissioner McCormick. Didn't get out of that one. Okay. Our, our other item is for vice chair. Uh, I think I can speak on that one. I think that, um, good run with, with Commissioner Edwards as our, as our vice chair, and I would, um, go with a motion to, uh, or a nomination for, uh, Vice Chair Edwards for next year's, or for this year as well.
Second.
All right. I have, I have a motion in a second. So then go through the election process again. And we'll start over here. Briadi.
Aye.
Commissioner Wickern. Commissioner Call, thank you. And, uh, I'll vote aye as well. Thank you very much. Okay. Uh, we had, uh, been given our, our handout, uh, for the bidding schedule for next year. And unless there's objection to that, um, I, I didn't have anything with that. It seemed like when we discussed that previously, that there wasn't any, uh, real heartburn with that. Has anything changed? Okay. Motion.
I will make motion to approve.
Okay, motion in a second. Roll call on that one as well. Director. That can be just.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries. All right, we are down to remarks from planning commissioners. Or no, excuse me, I, I skipped one. Um, public comment for items not on today's agenda. You mean, you guys came and hung out for this whole time through all of that to not get up and say anything? Man, that's some stick-to-it-ness right there, I'll tell you. All right. Okay, great. Thank you very much. Uh, thank you very much for attending. It's nice to see some people out there. Um, we really do appreciate it. Cause it doesn't happen very often unless people are really angry about something. So, thank you. Um, So, thank you. Um, uh, okay, from that, we'll go now to the planning commissioner's remarks. Uh, anything need to be said that hasn't been said already?
I just want to thank everybody for the discussion today. I think the discussion on this item, you know, there was a lot of back and forth and. Uh, there was a lot of good discussion that brought up a lot of different points and areas in here and. It was all resolved, you know, we, we come to a consensus at the end of the day and, and. So. Well, yeah, but I, I mean, the best of what we could do. Yes, so I, I just want to say I appreciate everyone for the way that went down, so.
Thank you, Commissioner. I think that's well said and I, and my sentiments exactly. Appreciate everybody's input on that. Uh, anyone else?
I got a couple of items. Uh, now legals left, I guess I can drone on till about. Anyway.
Eight thirty, Commissioner. Yes, I forgot.
Place to call home, solutions for the housing, affordability crisis. Uh, I, I found this, uh, pretty, a pretty stimulating kind of a conversation, but one thing in here really caught my eye. Uh, said, uh, that this person is outlining what we can do and. One, one thing she said is she, she felt that maybe like two or three zones for the whole state would be applicable. Not having so many zones. Uh, but the other thing in here that's pretty interesting is, is. Uh, the land use control is, uh, constitutionally guaranteed right to the states, not municipalities. I've heard that twice this year now. And I guess what that means is, is if we did something that, uh, went amok of. What the state felt they could come back and have us re-hear or do something different. And I, uh, and, and I'm kind of okay with that, but like I said before. I, I don't like other people making decisions for us in Weaver County. I, I just don't think it's germane. A lot of decisions we make may not be that popular from time to time, but at least we made it. Because the thing I learned in my years working for the federal government is if you don't make the decision, somebody will and chances are you're going to hate it all your life. And so, uh, I commend us working this problem through on the Capitol tonight because. If something like that could have something really bad hooked to it in the future. So anyway, my hats off on that. The other thing is, is, uh, a billion dollars for Ogden Airport. Really? I mean, uh, what? What, what's the county stand on that? I mean, I'm finding this, uh, like, uh, taking a bite out of a skunk.
Which end? You know?
So, um, from a, from a regional standpoint, we're, um, a little concerned about the ability to expand the runway. In that area, uh, there's not that ability to do that. When we started looking at, um, larger commercial airline coming into that area. We're restricted by Roy and, um, the, the state roads around that area. And so it's, it's a little difficult to be able to expand the airport and to make it more of a regional airport. Granted, they have picked up a few, um, airlines that, um, have, have benefited, um, the community. Uh, for connections to Arizona, um, to LA, um, which are great, but to be able to expand it to, um, more regional, um, sense, it's going to be difficult because of.
Yeah, I, I mean, you know, that, that's a lot of money to pour into a. Area that, of course, I'm not an airport designer or anything, but a small area because of the runways. I mean, uh, these, uh. And I guess the thing that bothers me, we've had a lot of close, close calls in that city over the years and. Only take, you know, one of these M eighties or whatever this, this discount flyers are flying that. Goes down in one of those neighborhoods and it reduces the population of Roy. And I just. I just find it short-sighted when we have other places to put that kind of money if we can get our hands on it. Because, uh, you know, to continue the development of our county. And I'm going to be bold enough to say to really put it on the map and tell Utah County, stay down there. But we're, we, uh, need that money for infrastructure things here, you know, if we can get it. So anyway, I'm, I'm glad to hear that there are some concerns. Maybe talking about the skunk was a little harsh, but, uh, when I read that and I, I just, I had to read it four or five times to believe a billion dot north of a billion. And so I'm, I'm, uh, somewhat relieved to hear that the county has some issues with that.
Yeah, there are some concerns there, but also, um, there are some economic benefits that come from putting, um, some money into that facility because it, it does come back and it benefits our central business district, um. In Ogden, it benefits our whole community, um, as we pick up, um, you know, more regional connections. But to be able to, um, expand it. It's going to be difficult to do that, especially internationally. That's really not going to be a possibility because of.
Yeah, I sat by a gentleman that, that been in Salt Lake City, you know. Development guy, uh, with the. Representing, uh, some corporations and I was asking him about, you know. Our situation up here in Weaver County, and this is clear back in, uh, probably about ninety or ninety-one, and he says, you know. Right now, most big businesses want thirty-minute access to an airport. Now Ogden didn't give it that for the smaller airplanes, but you know, uh, I, I just have a hard time believing that we would. Go for more passenger service, I guess is the word. I, I don't know, but it, it would have some economic benefit. Because when you drive by, you see corporate jets in Ogden now that we didn't see before, so. That's my two bits on the airport.
Anything else?
Worth.
Is there any more items?
Well, let's see here. I got two or three news. Anyway, um, I want to thank the, the crowd that come tonight. Thank you for that. Uh, I'm sure each of you, when you get your opportunity, will fill out a form to become us Weaver County Planning Commissioner. And, uh, you know, it, it's a, it's a thankless job, but it's a job about the future. And. We, with you, or the people that's going to shape that here in our community. So, thank you for coming and we'll see you next month.
I saw a lot of polite smiles and head nods, but I didn't see any volunteers.
Well, we won't let them out till they fill one up.
There we go. There we go. Anything else, Commissioner? Okay. Thank you. Legal counsel has left the building, so. We can go, we can skip that one, but, uh, Director Grover, do you have anything for us? Wisdom.
Just a couple of things you may want to just keep your eye on with the legislature, um, starting things up, um, shortly. Um, there is a lot of attention that's, um, getting, um. Unfortunately, a lot of attention. I'm a little concerned about this, as well as a lot of planners are in this area and it's. Um, taking things from the local area to the state control, uh, making decisions. At, um, the state area and getting rid of the planning commissions and things like that. So, um, I, I know that, um, that Utah EPA, um, chapter is working very heavily on this. To, um, try to make sure this doesn't happen because we feel that there's, um, a great benefit from this at a grassroots level. Um, that you have knowledge of, that the state doesn't have information. And so those are things that, um, are possibly going to be discussed, you know, this legislature, so you may want to stay up on that. And if you don't, it's okay because I will keep you up on what's going on there. Um, but that is, is a concern. Um, on another note, um, we have, um, another, uh, meeting set up for the general plan. Um, it's set for the eighteenth, um, will be. Uh, we were trying to get it next week, but we just weren't able to get in touch with the principal and get things lined up. And want to make sure we gave the public notice. And so we just barely found out today that we have the elementary school available for the. Eighteenth of January, so we'll be getting information out to the public, letting them know, but if you can let people know. Audience, um, at the West Weaver Elementary School, um, on the eighteenth at six o'clock. So, um, we would encourage all of you to be there, um, for that. And we've, um, invited our county commissioners to be there as well. It's going to be a little bit different format than what we had last time. It's going to be similar to what we did in, you went to, um, Highlands at the elementary school there. Where we're going to have different stations set up and people. Who's, um, some boards and that, what they like. What they like or don't like about the plan, um, and different proposed scenarios that they can, um, look at. And get their feedback there. We have, um, had. Different work session meetings scheduled, already scheduled with the county commission on that. And then we'll be talking about some of that tonight, um, in the work session. And then the next calendar item that I just want you to be aware of is we're hopefully going to be able to have a planning commission dinner. Appreciation dinner for, um, you, which we didn't have last year, uh, because of COVID. But we have that tentatively set for, um, February tenth, which is a Thursday. Um, we'll get you some more details on the time and the location. We're still trying to work a few things out that way, but. Um, uh, if you can just tentatively put that on your schedule for February tenth, um, and that's for your spouses as well, so. Uh, but like I said, we'll get you more information. So that's all I have.
Thank you, Director. Okay, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment to work session.
Still moved.
Second.
And we have, and Charlie would like to go take our work sessions typically where we have done them in the past in the back room instead of here, so we can go around the table. Um, there's chairs for you in the public to sit, um. So if we could do that, that would be great. We appreciate it.
Great. Thank you, Director. First, second, all in favor?
I.
Opposed?
Okay.